Good evening. Welcome to our Monday, March 31, Cabarrus County Board of Education Budget Work Session. This is our annual work session where we get, where the budget for next year will be presented to us. So with that, I am calling the meeting to order, and we are going to go on to item number 2.01, which is our opening introductions and greetings and an opening ceremony. So we'll go ahead and do our introductions here at the folks of the dais. We've got Board Member Shannon Lanskaster, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Sam Treadaway, our Superintendent Dr. Kapicki, myself, Rob Walter, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Greg Mills, Board Member Pam Escobar, and Board Member Melanie Freeman, and then William Eisenhower as our Board Attorney. And tonight, we have our SRO joining us. Tonight is Angela Thompson from the Early College. Thank you for being here. And also, I see in the audience, we have our Vice Chair of County Commission Laura. Laura, thank you for being here as well. So with that, let's all stand and say our Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is right here. My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag.
... of the United States of America, and this Republic of America, for which it stands one nation under God, and in the just delivered to the nations.
Thank you. All right, we're going to set our agenda. There's pretty much the item on the agenda is our budget for next year. So with that, I would need a motion and a second to approve our agenda tonight.
Second.
So, Mr. Treadaway and Ms. Escobar, any further discussion? All in favor of setting our agenda, say aye. Aye? Okay, well, we have an agenda for tonight. We've got the two items on it. The number one item is the budget calendar. So I know our staff has been working very hard over the last several months putting this together. Mr. Penn's going to review where we are on that budget calendar, and then we'll get into the budget. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I see it's a nice, short agenda tonight. I'm sure this will be a quick meeting. So let me start out with the budget calendar, right? This is something you've been familiar with for a couple of months now at this point. And this is kind of my opportunity to give some recognition to the people that have been involved with this process for more than 140 days, right? From start to finish to where we are now. By my count, there's somewhere upwards of 200 people that have been involved with the budget development. Principals and their treasurers, department heads and their treasurers, members of the cabinet, certainly members of the HR team and finance team. It's a lot of folks that put this together. So as we get toward the end of the process here, you're seeing the culmination of all that work. And as I thought about sort of different phases of the budget as the calendar, as I was looking at it, I would say really the month of October and prior to December, you know, was sort of our preliminary work around the budget as we're developing templates that go out to the cabinets and departments and to the schools. January is filled with the initial sort of development of the budget, including the 60 meetings that we conduct with the schools and with departments to go through their needs for the upcoming year. That's also our opportunity to ferret out things that were one time in nature and get to go away as a part of the '25, '26 budget in this case. The month of February is kind of dedicated to what I would call consolidation of all those requests as we go through each of those templates, and we roll them up and we see what that turns out to. Refinement is what most of the month of March is about. Taking that budget roll up, continuing to work down the numbers, try to come up with something that's palatable and reasonable, but still reflects the needs of the district going into next year. And then if you kind of cross tonight's session and into the month of April, is where we're going to get into where I was with all the public engagement aspect of this, right? So for those of you that were here last Thursday, for the finance committee, you're going to see a version of this budget presentation four times. So I hope you like it because you're going to get used to it and be sick of it by the time we get to the end, right? But there's at least a couple more opportunities between the work session tonight. We do the presentation a week from today for the public hearing. We do another presentation on April 14th, where we look to try to adopt the budget, which then leads to a county discussion with the county commissioners around budget adoption. And you'll see, there's actually a pretty long gap between when we're essentially done with the process, having presented to the Board of Commissioners, and when the Board of Commissioners actually goes to adopt the process. So we're effectively done after April 15th, and then we wait to see how we're awarded funding on or about June 16th, when they go to adopt. Okay. Questions on the calendar?
Board members, I think we're good with that. With that, we'll move on to 4.02, which is the budget presentation for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. All right. So just in terms of what you're going to see in the presentation tonight, we'll go through sort of what the objectives are of the budget. There is a board policy that governs compliance with how we develop the budget. I'll go over assumptions and background data that we had feeding into this. And then there's three main pieces of the budget as we develop it. Continuation budget, that's programmatic activity that we have today that we continue into next year. Expansion requests, what we really truly consider new-new, that's not in this year's budget. And the capital piece, and there's actually subcomponents to that as well that we'll get into as we go along. We kind of go over the calendar, but there's a slide in here also that kind of then highlights the last remaining key dates. So with that said, what are the agendas? Well, certainly, we want to develop a budget that continues to support the D-25 strategic plan and a successor that goes into 2027. We want to make sure we're putting resources where they're needed most. We want to try and present this budget in a way that's accessible to everyone, not just finance people. Be as transparent as we can about what constitute a need and what's a want. This one's always been personally important to me. Don't sacrifice the long-term to solve a short-term need, right? And then what you're going to see is continue to work aggressively, reduce certified staff paid by local funds. And we'll get into that detail as we go into the presentation, but it's something that we've now attempted to do in two different, two successive budget cycles. So as to the budget process, this is Board Policy 8100. And just to be clear about what you're seeing here, the black text is what the actual verbiage of the policy is, and the red is sort of how we respond to that. So establishing the priorities of the school district, providing opportunities to students, sound basic education. We integrate all the budget requests they're asked to provide a linkage to. How does your request tie to your school improvement plan, and how does it tie to the strategic plan overall? You'll see that we have a capital planning process. The board, a couple of weeks ago, approved the 10-year plan around capital. And so there's an ongoing activity that gets refreshed every year. Budget planning into programmatic activities. You know, we've actually enhanced in the time that I've been here, the monthly reporting that's going to the board. And we now have a new finance committee. That's intended to be both instructive and to talk about ongoing issues that we have within the district. Continuing on with that, how do we make sure we have connectivity to the county? There was a Board of Commissioners budget retreat meeting on February 22nd that Dr. Kapicki and I participated in. Mr. Walter, you were there as well. Broad participation by administrators, teachers, other school district personnel. As I mentioned, we did conduct 60 meetings with schools and departments, and there is a public hearing that's scheduled for next week. All practical and legal sources of income. You know, cash management is something I look at on at least a monthly basis, if not more frequently, to make sure we're maximizing the yield we get on our cash. And then making sure that we're now, for the first time, including sales tax refunds in our estimated revenues as well. And I would say these last two really are ongoing activities. They're not discrete only to the budget process, right? Assessing the needs of the school district, revenues and expenses, and identifying the most cost-effective means of meeting the school district's needs. That's active conversation that happens on a regular basis with Dr. Kapicki and the cabinet, Budget process continues. You've all seen the calendar now. We actually developed, there's a requirement that it be shared with the board prior to January 31st. It went out actually in December this year, this past year. There's a long process around what the deliverables are. And the first public sharing of this was on the finance committee last Thursday. We've got the session tonight as well. The board will hold at least one public hearing. As I mentioned, that's scheduled for a week from tonight. And the board will consider the budget, make changes therein no later than April, May 15th. Well, it's actually quite a bit before that. We need to turn in our homework. So the adoption meeting is scheduled for April 14th. We transmit that over that same night to the county with a presentation of the Board of Commissioners on April 15th. So it's a fairly tight calendar the rest of the way. But we actually start with when we present it to county and work backwards. So it's not like we drive a lot of that process. We take the county's timeline and we integrate that into our own, continuing to work backwards where we know the deliverable is. All right. So what are our key assumptions going into next year? So what you're going to see in here is a 3% contingency for legislative increases. Now, what I will tell you is, the governor's proposal is significantly higher than that. The governor's proposed 11% over two years. Usually, the first year is higher than the second year. But I will tell you that in my informal survey of what we call the Big 12, the 12 largest districts in the state of North Carolina, all the other CFOs are using 3%, right? Position allotments that aggressively reduce the budget incap from locally funded staff. The HR team has done a great job of working with the finance folks around that in all the allotment discussions that have been taking place over the past week or two. And you'll see the impact of that as we go forward in the presentation. In the absence of any other information, we're going to use an inflation assumption of approximately 2.3%. That gets sourced from the Congressional Budget Office, which is a nonpartisan economic engine basically that feeds into the federal government. But their forecasts are actually eerily accurate, as it turns out. Anything that's going to be an impact from funding and arrears, and the internal estimates around growth in student enrollment, or ADM, and we have a slide that addresses that. Any one-off developments with a significant impact, any kind of ongoing litigation that we have, or any kind of changes in the EC funding models, because there are a few proposals that are out there that way. So we'll continue to monitor that activity at the state level. But I will tell you, as I mentioned, I will probably have a slide in here around risk factors going into the next year's budget in time for the public hearing. One of the ones that's going to be on there is the misalignment of the timing between when we present it to county and seek funding, and when the state actually delivers the state budget, right? Those two are inherently out of sync. This would be a lot easier process if I knew the state funding model and what that would look like and what the state increases would be before I went to the county to ask for their support. All right. Projected enrollment going into next year. We've grown, expected to grow by approximately 300 students by the end of month two next year. We're about just under 1%. But what's kind of interesting is, if you look at the first bullet in the box at the right, we're actually up about 100 students already from where we were when we started this year, right? Now, what gets interesting about that, I should say, from the month of, end of month two. Well, end of month two is what determines what your state funding looks like. So that's 100 students that we've absorbed into the district with no additional funding, right? But we're still providing services to those students. Again, an indicator of why some of this work is out of sync with where I think it should be. But it would take legislative changes and a few other changes to get back into sync in a way that's a little bit more logical. You can see on the right how some of the demographics have changed over time. This is a slide that I mostly stole from the facilities planning presentation that was done. But I think it's a good indicator of how we're expected to change over the next few years, right? We're still expected to grow. We're still expected to see upwards of 400 new students a year. There is a lot of change in terms of support that we're required to provide to our students, and we're becoming more diverse as we go forward, right? Along those lines, we've talked a lot this year about both the number of the EC students we serve and the cost of services per student increasing over time. And I'll call out your attention to the rows that are highlighted in yellow. You'll see the growth in student count. It's up 700 over just a four-year time period. You'll see the cost per student now coming in at about 9,500. And I should stress that this is just the EC component of serving those students. It has nothing to do with the general ed components that also tie to those students as well. And so one of the things we're estimating for this year is about a total cost of almost 42 and 1/2 million to servicing those students, right? When I take out the state funding, and when I take out the federal funding, the ongoing piece that's related to serving EC students, it still leaves us with a net cost of 9.8 million that has to be absorbed somewhere. And that somewhere is typically our local budget, right? So you can see the condition, the pressure that that puts on our budget over time. And the way we've discussed a lot of the deficit for this year, I've mentioned how EC ties into that. And you can kind of see how this plays out a little bit more clearly this way. I would think another one of the risk factors I'm likely to describe going into next year would be continued growth in EC, right? Because as it turns out, and you know, we have no control over who moves into the district, who students needs support. And we're legally required to provide the support that's provided in the IEPs, or individualized education plans, right? So they arrive here, we're responsible for educating them. Okay? All right. So let's look at a very high-level overview of what is the continuation budget. So as I mentioned earlier, just in terms of definition, continuation basically means, what I have today, what would it cost us to run the same thing next year? If I just came back and I didn't change anything, and I turned the lights on in August, what would that cost us? And this actually lays this information out in the same way that the county appropriates the money to us, right? So you'll see instructional services, facilities, technology, and the contingency for legislative adjustments I made a comment on earlier around our assumptions, right? And you'll see the change in terms of the '24, '25 appropriation and the '25, '26 request. And it looks like at a high level, the overall increase is going up 15.6 million. But I would say that we then need to include an offset for other revenues that we have that are not directly tied to the county appropriation. Fines and forfeitures, interest on our cash generates about another 1.2 million. Special revenue, and we'll get into what that is, is another 2.9. So it has the overall effect of reducing the continuation request to 11.4, which nevertheless translates to a 12.7% increase for next year. Now, we recognize that that percentage increase is high. But what I will tell you is that for the last several months of work, we think this is indicative of sort of where we are right now for a lot of different reasons that we'll get into as we get further into these numbers. At the bottom, those numbers are just placeholders. What we anticipate charter school funding will cost us next year, what will it cost us for providing the person that's related to Special Olympics, and what will it cost us for park maintenance? What I will tell you is those are essentially passer costs, right? That the county is responsible for funding us and funding the charters on the same per-pupil basis that they give to CCS and to KCS, right? That's how the law reads. So what you see there is an anticipated growth and the anticipation of an increase in the overall budget, right? It's an impact of both factors. There was a question that got asked last Thursday. How many do we currently have in the charter school program? And that currently is 2,993. The interesting thing about that is it's down a little bit from the beginning of the year. At the peak earlier in the year, it was 3,074. And I asked Mr. Stain tonight if he and his team can take a look at, do we know if any of those charter school students have regressed back into CCS, right? And what's interesting is if it happens after month two, we don't get the funding for those students, right? So timing again becomes sort of a critical issue around that lines. All right. So with that at a high level, let's kind of take a look at this. Now, I mentioned revenue is a big piece of this problem. I've been discussing the revenue shortfall this year, kind of as we go in along, talking about this year's deficit. So if you look at the top section, that's the local piece that really the county and internally here, we work on. So fines and forfeitures in this year's budget was 2.2 million. I don't have any confidence in making that higher than 900,000 for next year, which is the pace that we're on right now, actual dollars in hand. Interest on investments, although I expect the interest rates to hold up, our cash balances will not. As you know, we've been consuming cash fund balance appropriate as we've gone along with the appropriations. I do expect we're going to have to consume more as we go through the year. So just an overall lower level of cash to invest, right? Then we get into what's the special revenue piece, and you'll see the major components of that. Medicaid reimbursements, because of the significant slowdown in state approval activity, we're calling for $950,000 next year instead of 2.4 million. Sales tax refunds, we're going to peg in at about 342,000. We feel pretty good about that number staying fairly consistent. There's a few different components that make up that other Mrs. York's income, but it's not going to change much in terms of next year. And then indirect costs will hold up pretty well as well. But when we look at the different components and some of the grants that we know are expiring, we're expecting that to trend down about $15,000. Overall, we're looking at a revenue drop of about 2.8 million. And to put that in proper context, that's 3.1% of the current year budget, right? So even if our overall expenses grew zero, I would still need 3.1% more just to get back to the same starting point. Do you understand that? Because that's kind of the key point. This is not only an expense-driven exercise, the revenues that we're going to be short come into display as well. Okay? So when we get into the local budget and the continuation request, we talk a little bit about what we call staff versus stuff. Staff makes up about 2/3 of that, of total appropriation that we request. Stuff makes up the remaining 1/3. And the first piece we want to talk about is the certified personnel. And what you can see here is 254 personnel in the current year budget. In the current year appropriation, it was 7.9 million. And what I will tell you is, the reason that's growing so substantially to next year is number one, the number I used in this year's budget was too low, right? It did not reflect the average cost that it should have. We came in, if you do the math, that's something equivalent to about $31,000 per position for salary, which is too low. It should have been higher than that. So part of that is recovery of that. The second thing is, we are not continuing to see only what we call A0, our lowest-paid teachers, be in local. Because the allotment growth has happened so slowly and not kept pace with our own growth, and this is part of where funding and arrears comes into play, we have teachers that are higher than the lowest salary included on local funds right now. So that's driving a lot of that. And remember, go back to what Mrs. York said in her presentation last Thursday, right? There's a big difference between getting a position allotment, where it could be the highest-paid teachers that you have, which is typically how we do it, and getting a dollar-based allotment. So the easiest example I could say is this. Let's say you had a dollar-based allotment, and you had an allotment of $100,000. And you had 10 people that were making $10,000 each. Okay, that math is easy. I can fit that $100,000 into that $100,000 allotment. If that person's now making $12,000 a year, I can't put all 10 people into that allotment. I can only put eight people into that allotment. Historically, the way that we've done that is when we've run out of state allotments, we move the funding source to local, right? And then in particular, will come into play what we see on the next page when we talk about classified. Now, what I will tell you is, kudos to the HR team working with allotment process with principals this time around. We were anticipating that we can take down another 60 certified positions out of the local budget, right? On top of the ones that we took down last year. I don't have great confidence that we can go lower than the 194. And the reason is that, is that we have certain programs that are in place, program choice in particular being the most obvious one, where systemically, right now, the way we're set up, I'm not sure we can reduce that position count any further in local, right? Unless we do programmatic change going forward to get more efficient around some of those numbers. Flipping over real quickly to the classified side, and forgive me the way this is broken out, but again, it ties out to the way that we're appropriated by the county. Facilities and maintenance, you'll see 79 people. That includes seven vacancies that we're budgeting for at 8.2 million. 32 people in technology, that also includes one vacancy in that area, at a total of 3.4. 212 positions for all other, at a cost of about 18.6 million. Of course, a reasonable question would be, what's in that 212? Well, 144 of those positions are based in schools. And they break down primarily into three different buckets. The school treasurers, the school data managers, and the school front office personnel. The remaining 68 of those sit somewhere in central office. That's the finance team, and the HR team make up about a third of what's left, maybe closer to a half, right? But then you also have your cabinet-level positions, part of that sits in local. Some of your directors, part of that sits in local. But that's a breakdown of, when you look at the 212 sort of all other and classified, it runs literally everything else, right? That's not paid for somewhere out of state funds. So what we're looking at is a total of classified at 323 positions, 517 overall if you add in the certified on the prior page, at a total increase of cost of 2.8 million. Okay?
Is it okay?
Yeah.
We can ask questions during the presentation?
Sure.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you for showing those numbers or explaining some of that. This is not for today, but just for future. I think it's important for people to realize that the school district is the number-one employer in Cabarrus County. And so there is a lot of pushback from people talking about how this office is too heavy. But I think it's important to look at, maybe if we can look at our biggest competitor as far as most employed or biggest staff is HRM, I would be curious to see how large their HR department is, how large their financial team is. Just because I recognize we're schools, and we try to do things at the cheapest amount as possible, and we have to be fiscally responsible. But at the end of the day, if you're the largest employer in your county, I think people respect the fact that if you're going to get hired, you expect an HR professional to get you onboard as quickly as possible. And so there are certain positions, yes, the teachers are the most important people in our system, and they're teaching our children. But the reality is, is if you're going to run an organization of any kind, you do have to have businesspeople who know what they're doing.
I fully agree.
Ms. Dr. Kapicki.
Yeah, if I could just take a sidestep here for a minute. Dr. Williams, could you approach the podium, please? And then Dustin Schu, please be ready. Can you, because we've talked about this, and we actually did some comparisons across the state to see if we were in excess or if we were larger than most, and what we found was quite the opposite. Could you speak to the HR, what you've just recently described in terms of how big your department is comparatively speaking?
Yes, so full-time folks in my department, I believe there are 15, 15 people or so, maybe 16 that we have, I think it's 15 that we have in that department. If you compare directly against Union County, they're over 20 at a similarly sized district. In Union County, the Johnston County, who's a district very similar to Cabarrus, is also seven to 10 positions higher than where we are in our HR team. I would say our HR team to process the number of applications and hires that we process annually. It is a Herculean effort by those wonderful people in that department because it is tight. One that we're working on right now that I think really speaks to it is just folks that are retiring, and will have a good number of retirements. Those are being handled by two people. So every retirement in the district for us, we have a benefits retirement team of two to handle those. We have three people who handle teacher hiring. So I would say on our side, compared to districts our size, we are running very, very, very tight in our department.
And the second point I'd like to point out to the board is, I had asked Mr. Schu probably about a month to six weeks ago to actually research his question and compare our districts to other likable-sized districts across the state and others as well. And he came back, and he can share with you what he found.
Yes, sir. Taking a look at executive leadership across all of our like districts, so similar to what Dr. Williams shared, looking at districts with similar size, similar communities, and then also looking within our region, we fell squarely into about the 30th percentile in terms of size, meaning we were well below the average in terms of executive leadership size. And that ranged, we looked at it on a per-pupil basis. That seems to be the most reasonable way to look at that. And so looking at the number of students per executive leader, we fell below the average when you look at our region as well as like districts.
So I just want to share that with the board, which we are looking at that, and we're being cognizant of how, you know, how large or not large we are, not the best English, but we are aware, and we're taking a good, hard look at it as well. So thank you, Mr. Schu, and thank you, Dr. Williams.
Any feedback from the board on that? Or do we want to see that report? Is it a paper report?
Yeah, I can get that to you, Mr. Walter.
Anybody? Comments? Escobar?
The reason why I'm asking the question is because we're hearing that feedback from the public, and I just want to remind people that we are a large employer. And so we obviously think about schools first and the staff there, but we have, we do have to think about the workloads that are falling on the people in this building. And you would not want to go to a hospital and not have qualified staff there. You should expect the same for your teachers and for the rest of the staff.
Yeah, and I agree. And I guess the point I'm trying to make home is, we are aware of it, and we are making sure we're doing our homework to make sure we are as efficient as possible. So I do appreciate that oversight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Penn, we'll just get back to the presentation.
All right. So as I mentioned, total staffing, 67.4 million, makes up roughly 2/3 of the continuation budget. And if we move forward, we'll start getting into what I call some of the stuff, right? So again, this breaks down into the non-personnel cost, instructional first. I'm not going to go through every single line item on here, just to call out a couple of the highlights. But I will tell you that 11 of the budget lines, as you see on the next two pages, are decreasing. lines that you see on the next two pages are decreasing. And I think that's kind of testament to the fact that we really do spend a lot of time with the schools and departments going through these, making sure that we're taking out things that no longer apply, making sure that we can get tighter and more efficient on some of the line items that are in that budget. So, it's not just a question of taking last year's number and adding something to it. That's not what we do. So, if you go to the second page, you're going to see a total increase of one-point-six million. And I want you to kind of keep that number in the back of your mind, because there's only a couple of lines that drive almost that whole change. So, coming back one more page to where we started here, what I will tell you is, if you were to look at the computer software and supply line, up about three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, we have the VEX licenses for all our schools are renewing next year. That's a total cost of around a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And we also have some things being reclassified out of the next line down out of contracted services to software, which is more appropriately where it should've been budgeted. But in the contracted services, one of the things that we know we did is we pulled out a lot of one-time expenditures from that line, the reclass to software, as I mentioned, and we were able to, we identified alternative funding that the cost no longer needed to be in local. What's left in that line, it boils down to a handful of different things. The biggest piece is the cost of our SROs that are funded out of local budget. There's a piece that gets funded out of grants. There's a piece that gets funded out of in-kind contributions, both from the city of Concord and from the county. What's not funded by those sources winds up in our local budget. Traffic control is another big piece of that. Our athletic trainers are paid for out of that line. So, there's a fair amount of stuff that rolls through contracted services, but those are the three main buckets that sit underneath there. If you go down a little bit further on the page, you'll see a fifty thousand dollar item for judgments and settlements. That's never been budgeted before, but what it will tell you is that we've got settlements in three consecutive years, most of which are EC-driven. So, I think it's appropriate to at least put something in the budget for next year to acknowledge the fact that I don't think a lot of that activity is going away anytime soon. If you continue down the line, you'll see an increase of about eighty-seven thousand related to other professional technical contract services. That's because of the increased cost that we're incurring for background checks and for drug screening costs for our new employees, right? Other textbooks, up a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, actually ties to a tuition line on the next page. It's driven by the same issue. It's the Cabarrus Health Services Sciences Institute, CHSI. Their senior class will be the first senior class next year for that program, right? So, most of the classes they're going to take are at the collegiate level. We have to reflect the increased cost of the textbooks and for the tuition that we'll be paying for that program for next year, right? But the last one on the page, and this one's sort of critical, it drives three-quarters of that one-point-six million I mentioned, is the property and casualty insurance. You may recall, probably sometime in the May-to-June timeframe last year, we were discussing the fact that the way property and casualty insurance was bought here in Cabarrus County schools as a cost-saving measure was only done on a depreciated value. And what that means is, had we had a catastrophic event, the maximum we would've been paid out would've been six-hundred million dollars if we lost every school, God forbid, right? The replacement cost of those schools is two-and-a-half billion dollars, right? So, we would've had no insurance coverage for the remainder. So, a very conscious trade, it had been a conscious choice to change the way that we bought the insurance as a cost-saving measure. I wasn't comfortable with that. I think it didn't reflect proper risk management for the school district. It put significant levels of local tax dollars at risk for having built all those buildings. So, we went back, and we changed it to replacement cost value. That more than doubled the price from four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to about nine-hundred thousand dollars and change. What we're hearing now going into next year is to expect at least a ten percent increase in rate, and to expect insured values to go up at least three percent, which means it has the impact in the property lines of going up at least thirteen percent year-over-year. Now, typically, we had been absorbing property and casualty insurance in our special revenue fund. We can't afford to do that. It's gotten to be too big a number. But consider this. Four months after we made that change, Helene hit. So, had we not done that and had the storm track a hundred-and-twenty miles to the east of where it did, we'd be having a very different conversation about what our insurance recoverables would've been for the schools that got impacted by it, right? So, I still think it's a better and more appropriate use of public fund stewardship to continue to pay at that higher rate, and to make sure we have proper insurance coverage in place. If you then take a look at the four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, it's the first increase on this page. That is for our electric, water, and sewer utilities. And that's based, that four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar increase is based on what we're seeing so far this year in terms of usage and anticipated rate changes that we know have been filed for, right? If you continue on down the page, supplies and materials, up a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that ties to something that's fairly discreet, is the supplies for kindergarten play-based learning. It's the last year that we need to include that. So, it's a one-timer this year. It'll go away next year. And what you're going to see is in the capital discussion, there's an associated cost of another a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars related to the furniture for that program. But this will complete out what was a three- or four-year funding cycle to get play-based learning at the kindergarten level up and running. If you continue down, there's the tuition item that I mentioned in the ninety-two thousand dollar increase that ties to CHSI. If you also continue down, we've never budgeted for this before either, but the unreimbursed cost of the Air Force ROTC programs, which is another form of program choice, if you would, we only receive back about fifty percent of the total cost of the instructors from the Department of Defense. The other fifty percent has always been historically absorbed by Cabarrus County schools within its local fund budget. And we're getting to a point where now, we really don't have capacity to put it there and not budget for it, right? So, it'll appear for the first time this year in this budget cycle at a two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, which again, is fifty percent of the cost of those instructors. And if I recall correctly, it's eight instructors in four different schools that provide that program. Okay. So, you see an overall increase of six-point-nine percent. That one-point-six million, and between utilities and insurance alone, that's effectively the entire increase. Everything else is kind of offset with other lines that are decreasing within those two pages. Okay? All right. So, facilities and maintenance, total increase of eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, fourteen-point-seven percent. It is sizable, but it's something that we need to address. This has been a perennial source of deficits within the budgeting program that we have here. I actually thought I addressed this properly last year and did not. So, making a concerted effort in this year's proposed budget to make sure we do get that addressed. And what I'll tell you is, the five-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollar increase at the top of the page, the monthly services and the all other are all tied together. That's work that's performed internally by our tradespeople. So, those three are linked together. Now, for context, building maintenance, we spent more than a million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four. In that year, it was about a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars over budget. In the current year, we've already overspent the budget by forty-five thousand with three months to go in the fiscal year, right? So, we know we have to keep shifting money around as it currently stands to make sure that the repairs are getting done that need to get done. And these are the kind of repairs, and Mr. Taylor's in the audience, he could speak to this more directly if needed, that can't wait. These cannot be deferred, right, because they present some level of hazard to either the staff or students that need to be taken care of and addressed immediately. Monthly services is kind of a misnomer. I'm going to ask you, if you've worked with my team to change the title of that account, what it really reflects is going out and buying materials to do repairs internally. So, the bigger vendors that are in that space, Lowe's, Home Depot, City Electric, Sherwin-Williams, all the places that if they need to do a repair, they're going out and buying raw materials from those places in order to do it, right? And at the very end, the all other has literally everything else that's associated with running the department. So, it's computer equipment, workers' comp insurance, office supplies, copiers, stormwater management, and the other big piece is it's projects that are less than five thousand dollars that are not capitalized somewhere else, right? So, that's why I said, the three big increases are sort of tied to the same issue. It's those little projects, it's the monthly services and the building maintenance and repairs that kind of reflect, you know, the ongoing age of the schools and our need to maintain them. And I will tell you that in each of the years that I've been here, I've had to shuffle around money within our local budget to make sure that facilities and maintenance had what it needed. Okay? All right. So, this one, a little more straightforward. This is our technology piece. And again, this is how the county allocates the money to us. This is the non-personnel cost associated with technology. The big one item increase at the top is the new Apple lease. We had a lease that was rolling off at seven-hundred thousand. The new lease is around one-point-two million. The four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollar increase is the cost of the new Apple lease going into next year. And recall that we did not receive funding for any devices in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle. So, we've had to do some things internally within the budget to try to address that. Computer software, when the request initially came in, it was for an increase of five-hundred thousand dollars. And I told Mr. Sand, we can't do that. I said, here's a number. I need you to go back and rationalize your software portfolio as best you can to try to get down to this increase. So, and I actually may have told him a higher number and how cross-sarring is lower. So, you know, we have a drop in computer inventory that we're carrying, right, that's more appropriate for where our current level of spending is. All other, within the technology space, includes security camera maintenance, workers' compensation, our E-rate consultant. You'll remember the discussion on E-rate and what we're doing with the services there from a recent discussion. Mileage reimbursement, mobile phones, office supplies, ID badge materials, continuing education on cybersecurity and emerging threats. That's the big one that's driving the increase year-over-year. You've certainly heard the IT staff talk about that's ongoing activity, right, because it's perennial. We are in government and healthcare. Those are the two favorite spaces for cybercrime to take shots at, because frankly, it's where the money is. So, you see a lot of activity around trying to make sure that our defenses are adequate to make sure we're as shored up as we can be. So, that's driving the biggest piece of that increase year-over-year. So, that is the continuation. Expansion is new know. And so, expansion last year was three pages long. This year, it's two items, right, kind of recognizing the economic reality of where we are. So, the first one is a student safety specialist that would help address the twenty-four-seven nature of the crisis responses that we deal with. We currently only have one person that supports that activity on a twenty-four-seven basis right now. Psychological services specialist would help support the psych services coordinator. That role right now is done by converting a school-based allotment into the specialist position. So, we're consuming a resource that otherwise would probably be out in the schools instead, right? So, the request is for both of these positions to be included in next year's budget as a expansion request. Dr. Piki, anything you want to add to that?
I think you addressed it appropriately, and I think people need to come to realization too that, you know, we are a school of thirty-five thousand plus growing, and we have basically one person running our safety department. It's just not reasonable to think that one person can do that. And it's not just, it's, there's a lot that goes into that. It's a safety audit, it's a safety updates, it's working with all the various resources in the law enforcement community, both at the Sheriff's Department, Concord Police Department, all the state grants that go with that. There's just a lot of work for one person to maintain that, all the requirements for the safety issues that go on in the school system. So, that is the need. And the psychological piece, I think, is very easy to understand with all the various mental health issues that are going on in the system and across our country. We just need more help. And that's succinct as I can say it.
Okay. All right. So, we're going to transition into the capital piece of the budget. And within capital, you're going to see that there's three different tranches that are involved. Generally speaking, items that are under twenty-five thousand dollars, we call that capital outlay. That's a pretty consistent funding source that we have from the county at one million, twenty thousand dollars, that specific figure that we've been allocated each year for several years. You'll see maintenance projects between twenty-five thousand and four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand make up the next tier. And then, there's CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, which are generally projects of five-hundred thousand dollars and higher, right? But to talk briefly about our capital outlay, what I will tell you is, the initial ask here was over two million dollars. So, we had to find a way of trying to make sure that we have everything captured that we set as highest priority. So, what you'll see here is a replacement vehicle for the facilities and maintenance department. Facilities and maintenance coordinates the activities of what's called the Furniture Committee. It goes out and visits roughly ten schools a year, trying to address the ongoing needs of the furniture. Now, we're not talking classroom furniture. We're talking like front office furniture. In some cases, it might be libraries. It might be, you know, other types of spaces that are not the wide scale. We've got to replace forty classrooms worth of furniture. It's not that. But it's designed to address the other needs that we have around furniture. And I will tell you that this has actually been a pretty effective program so far, and I think Mr. Taylor would agree, that we put everybody onto the rotation. We try to make sure everybody's needs are met. This number will fluctuate from year to year based on available capacity of funding and what the immediate needs are in that cycle. Couple minutes ago, I talked about play-based learning for kindergarten. Here's that furniture piece that's in here. And again, this is the last year for it. Fine arts, we always put aside money for replacing equipment within fine arts. And to the extent that there's any money left in any of these buckets, we actually sweep it over to fine arts at the end of the year to make sure that they've got adequate funding going forward. Because we know instruments are expensive, right? It's like that a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars is not actually going to go very far to replacing that. To the extent where there's leftover money, we try to sweep some of it that way. This has actually been typically a pretty heavily-dominated central office list. And one of the things that sort of emerged in our conversation with all the school principals this year is things that they were asking for that have been on their request list for years. And it kind of bothered me to the extent that, why don't we have some kind of funding source that addresses some of this need? So, one of the things that we proposed is sending aside some money out of this to address those needs. And I'm not going to go through all of it, but in your appendix, on pages thirty and thirty-one, are the list of all the things that we identified school by school that we think fits within the scope of this budget. And it's something that I probably will expect to see going forward, that we continue to do this type of activity. And in a lot of cases, it's things that need to be fixed, and there's just no budget to fix it, or it's some small capital purchase item for a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars that they really just can't afford to take out of their instructional supply money. So, it's designed to take some of that into account and sort of address some of those needs going forward. Kind of in an odd place, but technology actually assumes some of the responsibility for making sure the book collections and libraries are continuing to be upgraded. And then, transportation, we've included two new mini buses for transporting homeless students. Unfortunately, our homeless student population continues to grow. And working with the transportation director, we think there's some advantage to having these small vans, mini buses, for transporting them more efficiently than what we're doing today. So, that makes up again the million twenty. That's been fairly consistent funding that we've seen from the county for the past several years. All right? And there is more detailed breakouts of the justification back in the appendix on this as well. Okay. So, I apologize for this. I recognize it's a bit of a reading chart. But when we talk about projects of between twenty-five thousand dollars and four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars, we're currently tracking eight-hundred-and-four different projects at a total cost of just under two-hundred-and-six million dollars. You'll see in the green across the top, that's the twelve different disciplines that roll up into Mr. Taylor's area and the projects that we've identified. And on the left, you'll see that it's either the year that the project emerged, you know, starting back to twenty, the twenty-eighteen, nineteen year, we still have some of those open at this point, and ones that we're starting to track that we anticipate being out there in the twenty-thirty-one to thirty-two period. But even if you only count what's in there right now and not take any of the future years, you're still sitting at six-hundred-and-forty-three projects with a combined value of a hundred-and-sixty-two million. So, it's significant, right? Now, clearly, we're not going to get funding for all six-hundred-and-forty-three projects. So, what we're always asked to do is, can you come up with the top thirty-six? So, Mr. Taylor and his team will go back through each of those disciplines and surface the three projects that make the most sense and have the highest priority for what they think we need to do. And you'll see that across the different disciplines, how that breaks out. So, in the bottom right corner of this chart, you'll see this thirty-six projects, as I mentioned, with a total combined value of ten-point-one million dollars. Now, what was unusual in terms of this last year is that the county actually gave us funding on all thirty-six. That's not typical. Usually, there's some portion of the list that gets funded, but last year, we got all thirty-six. But what we're proposing to the county is to take this thirty-six combined value of ten-point-one million as part of our capital budget request. Okay? All right. And then, on the next two pages, and I'm not going to go into any of the detail, is a very high-level, what's the project? And then, on pages thirty-two to thirty-five in the appendix, you have much more detailed justification for each of those projects, right? So, here's one to eighteen, and then, of course, nineteen to thirty-six on the second page, totaling out again to that ten-point-one million. All right. Okay. So, then, we get into the bigger stuff in terms of the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. What you're going to see at the top is new construction. So, from the ten-year facilities plan that was surfaced to you a couple of weeks ago by Dr. Bowers and his team, what we're bringing forward is the new elementary school and the replacement for Northwest Cabarrus, right? Now, I should point out that you're probably used to seeing for that first project, fifty-point-six million is the price tag. We've actually already received one-point-five million from the county in terms of startup money for the project. So, this remaining forty-nine-point-one reflects the difference between those two to actually finish out the project, right? Okay. So, going then down into the equipment, maintenance, and replacement, student Chromebooks we're proposing here is eight thousand new Chromebooks. And we're proposing it in the capital section of the budget as an outright purchase. If for some reason, we couldn't do this out of capital, the more, less expensive option for the county would be to for the county would be to say, put it in your operating budget request instead, that cost would be roughly $1 million a year to lease those devices over the next four years. But obviously, doing it that way, you're setting up a four-year commitment as opposed to a one-time purchase, right? But when you think about a district that's supporting, as we talked about earlier, 35,000 students, you know, somewhere around 8,000 devices a year, it's probably about the right level, given the fact that we typically see life cycles of between four and five years at the outside for these Chromebook devices, right? That's kind of the replacement cycle that we should be on. And that, of course, doesn't include any of the staff devices that would go along with that. Security cameras is something that we typically have on here every year. We add security cameras where we know that we have blind spots around the schools. Video is data-intensive. These are the servers that support capturing all that video information as well. And to the extent that we have breakage on the cameras, this is what helps replace those devices as well, right? But $850,000 has been pretty consistently the level that we've tried to have in this budget each year that we presented it. Last year, for the first time, we had a $1.3 million request in the budget to start replacing some of the outdated TVs and interactive displays. We use the term Promethean board. I think you got probably tired of hearing that word a lot last year. But the Promethean boards are sort of the next-generation interactive displays. And what we've tried to do is be smart about this, that when we replace something with a Promethean board, if the device that's being replaced still has value somewhere else in the district, we'll harvest that and move it somewhere else, right? So that somebody else has got a temporary upgrade until they're next on the list for the Promethean boards, right? So, you know, we've gone through a lot of exercise around trying to cascade down a lot of this equipment replacement in the most effective way possible. But we're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of three more years of funding to this to make sure we get all the way through all the classrooms that are necessary. I might be a little bit off on that, but it's at least close. One of the things that's sort of emerged recently is issues with our paging and intercom systems with the schools, particularly with the older schools, that if you're in certain parts of the building, the intercoms don't work. It becomes sort of a student safety issue certainly, that we want to start to address. So what's proposed in here is to replace and upgrade those paging and intercom systems at eight different school sites at roughly $100,000 per school. Just to point a marker out there, this again would be something that would take a long term to sort of go all the way through all the schools to replace it. But this is the first year that that request is made in on this list. Okay? So, so, as I mentioned, we also have facilities maintenance projects that exceed $500,000 in estimated cost. What you'll see here is the top 10 of those with a combined value of $42.8 million. And this is again, Mr. Taylor and his team going through and making sure that these are prioritized in the order of importance. This isn't something that comes necessarily out of the finance department. But what I'll tell you is that none of these projects were funded at this level in the current budget year. So to a large degree, this reflects the same list that we had last year. But with a little bit higher cost, right? Because that's typically the way it goes, you anticipate inflation, as you defer the project backwards. So total capital improvement plan, if you include the equipment replacement, the construction, the 10 projects that you have on here, is $228.9 million, right? And I put a footnote at the bottom that the 92 projects of more than $500,000 is worth $238.7 million, just to have some reference on. Okay, if we do that, 10, what's left? There'd be another 82 projects on the list. Okay? All right. So bear with me as I try to roll up this, all the requests for you here. So we talked about a net continuation request at the county of $101.6 million, an expansion request of $189,000 for the two items that we went through. Within capital, we had the $1,020,000 as part of the capital outlay. We had the 36 projects between $25,000 and $499,000 worth $10.1 million. The two new construction projects at $179.1. The new equipment at just under $7. And then 10 maintenance projects on the prior page worth $42.7. Rolls up to that, again, that's CIP of $228 and change. Total capital request at $239. Total all-budget request at $341.8. And that's kind of the way it all rolls up together. We did go over the calendar, but just again, for everybody who's listening in, key dates. Tonight, we've got our work session. Next week, we have our public hearing on the budget. Dr. Kapicki and I will talk to county leadership, and by leadership, I mean the budget team over there, not the commissioners, on the 9th, hopefully adopting a budget here two weeks from tonight. And then an actual presentation of the Board of Commissioners, we're scheduled for April 15th. Okay? And then everything else in that, after the package, other than questions, is going to be the appendices that I kept referring back to as I went along. Okay?
Well, thank you for the presentation. I know our board members have been writing down quite a few notes. I don't know if they were questions or just notes, but now it'd be a good opportunity to ask some of those questions that we didn't get to earlier. Pam?
And these are just questions. You do not have to answer them now. I just, for, on Slide 13, with the property and casualty insurance...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just trying to understand why there's a zero there if we are spending $980,000 this year. Is it just the way it was budgeted, and that's why it's mine?
Correct. Normally, it was just absorbed in our special revenue, and we paid it. And what I will tell you is, we made the conscious decision to change the coverage after the budget had already gone into place. So we went from $450,000 to $930, I want to say. And then we're looking at a 13% rate and property value adjustment going into that. And property and casualty in this case isn't just property. It also includes all our liability coverage, our cybersecurity. It's sort of the all-in cost of insurance.
And, I don't know if I can find this in my notes, but I will send it if I, it was, oh, Slide 16. You, that all other, I would, I think, because cybercrime's such a big deal, I do think that it might be helpful to list, I get that you're trying to be brief, and there's already so many lines, and there's so many things. But I do think, because that number is so big, it might be helpful to list out some of the things that go under in that all there, specifically the cybercrime. That would be my suggestion, just because I think we're trying to...
You catch that for me? Thank you. Okay.
Okay. And, I think that's it for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam. And then, Millie?
I know this is hard to compute, but do we have any growing trend numbers on homelessness on the EC and things like that, that we can at least somewhat project with?
Yes. I think that's, we can go back three, five, 10 years on that. And right now, the trends, I don't have them in front of me, but I can tell you the trends are on the increase. So I can get that information for you in more detail if you would like.
So like a percentage?
Yeah, I can give you a percentage. I can give you numbers. I can give you numbers of EC. I mean, Mr. Penn kind of outweighed some of the EC numbers early in the presentations there. I think it goes back four or five years on that. And I think we can go far, I know we can go farther back as well on that. And I can definitely get the EC projections, both in terms of raw numbers and percentages.
And you mentioned too, that we sometimes, we are transporting people across county lines, correct?
Correct.
I'm not real sure how that gets divvied up, or how that occurs. But is it happening in other counties? I'm thinking we're just all going back and forth.
We're not unique in that respect at all.
Okay. So how, how does that happen, that we transport people across county? They are living here now, and they, or they used to live here now, and they're back in Mecklenburg, and they still want to stay in the same schools? How does that happen?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the homeless...
Dr. Kapicki, you want to answer that question?
Thank you. So, our homeless children fall under what you call the McKinney-Ventle Act. And the McKinney-Ventle Act is the law that we must follow in terms of how we transport and educate our homeless population. Again, I can get you more detail on that if you'd like to read up on it. There's a lot there to understand. But the bottom line is, we have a federal obligation to make sure we're educating all of our homeless students. And a lot of that includes transportation, which is, we'll see a lot of the cost being spent.
Yeah, I was just questioning the coordination of it.
When you say coordination, what are you referring to?
Between counties. Who decides who...
We have a nexus to that child here in Cabarrus County. So a child who's experiencing homelessness and may have temporary living arrangements that are outside the county is our responsibility to provide the transportation.
And we have an individual that documents all that for us here in this building and watches over all those kids.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Okay. So you would like us to go through this, we're going to go through this again, I guess, at home. And if we've got questions that come up, how do we get those to you? And you're going to consolidate those?
Well, yeah, I would say email them to me. If it's not yourself, copy the board chair and Dr. Kapicki on those requests. It's easiest for me to roll those up into something that I can put online, so the public gets the benefit of those answers as well. So, that's something we did last year, and I'd like to continue that practice this year, because I think it's just kind of simultaneous disclosure, so.
Okay. And then we have, the public has an opportunity next week, as they go through this, and they see something they'd like to point out or share with us, they'll have that opportunity...
That's right.
...next week.
That's right.
During that hearing. And then the following week, we're going to be asked to...
Approve.
Approve.
Right.
Essentially, what's, well, here, as modified, or if it's modified.
And I guess, I would depend on to that. If there's a request for modification, be as specific as you can, right? That'll help us sort of refine where we need to be.
But in the reality of it, as it is every year, this turns out to be a list of needs for the school system.
Correct.
The chances of it being funded fully is next to zero.
I like to try and stay more optimistic than that, but I understand.
But there is, you know, there is a back and forth. The county does want to help us as best they can. So it's very important that we prioritize our top items, so we make sure that those are addressed first.
And I would depend on to that. We have a fairly short window from when we find out what the county appropriation is to us to when we start the fiscal year. It's only two weeks apart.
Mr. Penn, I really appreciate your presentation tonight, and the work of the team over the last several weeks, a few more weeks to go on this. So, thank you.
Any questions?
Anything else from our board members? Well, that's all we had on our agenda, so we actually will get out of here a little bit early. So I would need a motion to adjourn, a motion and a second to adjourn? All right, so we have one. Mr. Freeman, Mrs. Moore, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment tonight, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we'll say goodnight to our listening audience, and we'll see you next week.